Award. For somewhere at town marshal.
Nathan's director, clerk treasure, Sunday three.
Before we proceed. Like to request the change to the agenda, excuse me. Uh, due to some existing commitments, uh, I would like to move the town marshal reports. To in front of the approval of the monthly reports.
I have a motion, we have a second.
Can you repeat the motion?
The motion is to move the marshals report ahead of the approval of the monthly reports. Uh, I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor. Okay, so we will now go to the marshals report, so Chris, your.
Thank you.
Um, Nathan, could you pull up?
I'm trying.
Okay.
You're gonna have to go up.
Okay.
I'll have it up over on the.
That's fine.
Uh, but it started July, um. Monthly hours worked were a hundred and seventy point two five hours, uh, monthly miles driven were six hundred and eighteen on the Durango, forty two miles on the Tahoe. And then twenty seven hours on the aquatic patrol for the boat. Um, of those hours, forty and a half hours were during the premium pay timeframe, which was around the fourth of July holiday. Um, areas of concern or note, police department had five incidents, sheriff's office investigated five incidents within the town and two missing incidents in the township. Uh, the police department had twelve traffic contacts, eleven golf cart contacts and eighteen boat contacts during a timeframe. There were ten golf cart inspections done, five vehicle inspections done, um, put together matters here in a second. First, the incident that we had, uh, the police department had one alarm. Uh, one harassment complaint, one suspicious complaint, one property damage and one child abuse. Uh, sheriff's office during the town had one set up, um, two suspicious complaints, one found property and one mental problem. And in the township, there was a suspicious complaint and a purple injury crash. Uh, out of all those, uh, one thing to note, um, the stuff was a, uh. Stuff of a boat trailer from the marina, um, came up missing sometime after you dropped it off. Um, so sometime about a week and a half timeframe, the boat trailer came up missing, uh, presuming it stolen. There was a possibility of maybe somebody else did it by mistake or something like that, but we haven't found it as of yet. Um, the two radar signs on Penn drive and South Clear Lake Drive were sent in to be modified. From their battery power to solar power, this is the very first few radar plans that the town bought actually in nineteen. Um, the original quote for that was the hundred and eighty dollars, uh, which was within my spending authority, however, once the find got to the company, they do an inspection of them. Make sure they're, uh, they don't need to repair their updates, um, things of that nature. When the two signs got there, they did their, uh, inspection of them. And unfortunately, both signs, um, had been repaired that they need to be done to them, um, with their outside of my spending authority. Um, the one sign, um. Need some, uh, update as far as the, uh. The text display and then also it needs to be modified from battery power over to solar power. Um, that one was eight hundred and eighty two dollars. Um, the other sign that was sent in actually has some damage to the back of it. Uh, where the cover needs to be repaired or actually replaced on the back of the sign. Um, with that into account and the modification from battery power to solar power. Um, that one is going to be one thousand two hundred and eighty dollars, um, to get that one. Um, upgraded and then fix the, fix the things that are broken on it. Um, so with that, on those two finds, I need approval to get them, uh, upgraded and repaired. Uh, before we can move forward on that.
So you got a total of twenty one sixty two when repair costs for the two signs?
Uh, repair and upgrade on those two, yes.
Gonna go ahead and make a motion to approve Chris, Nate, you already checked as well, sorry. Nate already checked, is in the budget. I'd like to make a motion to approve paying the twenty one sixty two to have the two radar signs. converted to solar power and to fix the issues on. Do we know which one it was, the South Blue Lake or the Penn Drive? One of them's messed up?
Uh, I believe it's gonna be this one, South Core.
And the additional repairs to South Clear Lake Drive.
We have a motion, do I have a second?
Just George, I'll take the motion.
Motion and second, all in favor?
I.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passed, so first you can go ahead and spend money to those two repair.
Uh, unfortunately then sometime between Saturday, August fifth. And Monday, August seventh, um, the sound on the sign on. East Clear Lake Drive doing northbound was stolen. Um. I did find somebody actually returned the battery and the rear battery cover, um. Yesterday morning, I found it lying up against the sign near East Clear Lake Drive, um, on the southbound side, somebody laid it there. Um, so if anybody does happen to hear, maybe who found it, I would love to find out, just so I can go back to that area. If maybe the sign was dumped somewhere. Um, but I got a quote for that sign to be replaced, um. Prices have gone up some, but just for that sign to be replaced, it's going to be three thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Um, to get a replacement sign put back up there on East Clear Lake Drive, so obviously we need approval to buy radar sign to replace that one.
That sign that you have a quote on is the modern technology, the solar panel that.
Or do we need a solar? No, we don't need a solar panel because they left it there.
Okay.
Um, but this is an evidence to the brand, brand new upgraded sign, um. Well, that, that will, yes, that will accept that's current solar panel that we have. Um, the upgrade, the only, really only upgrade to it is it takes different batteries now. Um, and they have a different relay in there for the battery system, so unfortunately I can't use our old batteries that we do have, so I have some spares of those. So I actually have to work with sign plus two brand new batteries to go along with that sign.
And that's included in the thirty.
That's included in the three thousand two hundred.
And Nathan, the do identify where and what fund is paying for that? Yes. I don't have a right to, I'm trying to do some. Let's bet, that's fifty two hundred bucks, so we're getting raised.
Fifty three, fifty four, fifty four.
Fifty four, I think we're gonna do, um. Think MBH. Machinery and equipment, I think is one place we're gonna take some of the funds. Um, because we don't have any radar sign and line item with any funds available to it. So I'm gonna have to take funds from a couple of different places in MBH. Probably I'm gonna take a portion in street signs, number twelve thirty three point zero one five. And the other portion will come from machinery and equipment, MBH. Uh, one, four, five, one point zero zero zero. Those are the two, those are the two like funds, funds.
So Chris has a request for her replacement sign on East Fairlight or thirty two fifty.
I would make a motion to move forward, knowing the funds are available and the feedback from the community on the signs that we need to get a better, another one on order and back up there as soon as possible.
What was the first one? Again. You said. What was the first one? That you were targeting under MBH. Oh, say that again to me.
And you mentioned.
Exactly.
Under MBH. Uh, you were one, four, five, one point zero zero zero.
Yep.
Machinery and equipment and street signs, MBH, one, two, three, three point zero one five.
Thank you. With, with that knowledge, again, I'll make a motion to allow Chris to proceed for with the purchase of the new sign. Uh, thirty two fifty.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
George, I'll take the motion.
A motion and second, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. I, I oppose hearing none, motion passes, so you go ahead with that.
Um, do one, one thing though, Nate. When you talk to the insurance company next week or later on this week, ask them if any of that can be covered. As that from the town.
I know, so we're checking.
Could we canvass any of the neighbors in the area to find out, cause I know.
Yes, I would go through there. I mean, we saw them, have they, there's no cameras close enough that. Picking up that I believe must, uh, at least that everybody I talked to. Um, so if anybody does talk to somebody on this clearly, I might have. But I did have to put another thing out on the top website, but I never read a few back from anybody. I do know that it was still there on Saturday around ten to, ten to noon sometime around that timeframe and then Monday morning I noticed it was gone about four A M. So. That's exactly during that timeframe. I still wonder about how they got. I know they're lag bolted in, so it took a lot of force to get it off. And other sort of, I don't want to, there's really no, nothing else we can do to keep them on time, um, short of the. Kind of coast off or, you know, like they did, they just had to break a whole thing off of there, so. I don't have anything, I haven't, Brent, I don't feel maybe go and talk about the budget thing, it's Lexipol. We just want that briefly.
Um, you can just give a brief overview of that now and.
Okay, Chris, before you do, I do have one follow up on your, uh, month of report. Uh, throughout, uh, clearly in the township, uh, collectively, there was four suspicious activities, was there a common thread? There was a four, four unique.
There was a common thread, okay, so. Okay, so nothing real. Down with concerns or, okay, thanks.
Are you seeing activity at certain times? Because it seems like all of it. It seems like there are more things now, have, have you guys identified certain hours or certain days where, no, remember, we, okay, that's fine, okay. No, that's fine, that's, I mean, that's a good thing, I guess.
Sporadic.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Um, yeah, I was just tapped upon it, I kind of talked to Dan Brent about it, um, we'll talk about the budget. Um, I would like to get a program in place for our policy procedures for the police department. Uh, when I originally got hired back in two thousand seventeen, our policy procedures were from late nineteen eighty, I was updated. Um, during the winter of two thousand seventeen into two thousand eighteen, I updated our, all our policies to what they currently are now. Um, so I think we went from like about fifteen pages to a few minutes, a lot of pages for the policies. Um, unfortunately. Um, state law, federal law and current best practices change constantly and it's hard to keep up with all of those, uh, changes that take place. Um, I'm trying as best I can, however, um, so hard to do, plus it's very daunting, which takes me off of patrolling around Clear Lake, either on the water or on the road. Spending time in the office, um, trying to get all the policies updated with everything that changes, so. There's a company out there called Lexipol, um, they actually write policies, um, for law enforcement and they keep it up to date with any state law. Uh, federal law or best practices that change throughout the United States, um. Currently, I can tell you the sheriff's department uses this, Angola City Police Department uses this. Um, and it's based on how they figure out the cost of it, it's based on the number of employees you have. And when I talked to them to get a quote on this, um, since we are all part-time employees, they did it as they vote for one full-time employee is how they based it on versus six employees. Uh, but what this, what this does, uh, again, it keeps all the policies and procedures up to date, if there are changes, that automatically makes those changes. Um, as soon as that case law or that state statute or federal statute, um, is, is adopted. Um, so it, it's current and up to date, it also keeps a tracking system as far as when the officers read that policy procedure and acknowledge it. So if there is an issue with an officer, um, I can go back and if they, they can say, I didn't know about that policy or I didn't read it. Because we actually have documentation of the date, um, and the time that they actually acknowledge it in the computer system. Uh, they also send out training bulletins, um, based on how you want them done, so they can do trainings on policy procedures. If there's a change in a policy and procedure, they'll send it out to them as well, they have to acknowledge that they've read it and understood it. Uh, so it keeps a track of, track of everything on there, um. There also can be some financial benefit to it, um, depending on your insurance company, the insurance company, one may help pay for the upfront cost of it. And two, it may also help lower the insurance rates, um, for the town, for the police department having this, uh, policy and procedure system in place. Uh, but I looked at it, I got a quote, uh, just a quote from them on it to see what it was going to be. Uh, this is a rough, uh, I'll be. Uh, the doc down on here, but it's gonna be about the initial startup cost of it is about fifteen thousand dollars. Uh, thirteen thousand nine hundred and twenty eight dollars is the initial fee to get all your policies and procedures up to date. And then there's an annual subscription fee, uh, again, based on the number of employees you have, they did it, um, based on one employee, just raw part-time. Um, so the annual subscription fee for that is one thousand nine hundred and thirty four dollars, the initial cost is about fifteen thousand dollars after that. Uh, and then it'll cost every year then just to get annual fee, uh, right about two thousand dollars or so. Um, I talked to Dan and Brett about getting that included in, including that in budgets, about in twenty four, I just wanted to give you guys a brief overview of it. Um, I think there should be a PowerPoint that was kind of attached to, uh. Thing here, so, um, there's something to consider, um. Whether or not we forward on that, obviously it's something we definitely.
Would that be redundant with, uh, what you guys are doing at the sheriff's office, is it identical to?
It is. Not quite identical to the sheriff's office, but, um, obviously the only things that would be different are some of the policies and procedures we have at the sheriff's office. Um, we don't have, we wouldn't have things like that here at Sheriff's, like we don't have a team everywhere, and we wouldn't need that here at Clear Lake. Uh, you know, obviously we have other things that like our road patrol, we have that, um, sheriff's department has that, road patrol. So there's a lot of things that are would be duplicated or identical to what they have, and then there's some things that. Are applicable to us because sheriff's department is a bigger organization.
In the startup.
No, because there is a difference between what counties do and what towns do.
Yeah, yeah. There is a difference, so like all our town ordinances would be incorporated into our policy procedures where the town ordinances aren't incorporated to the sheriff's department. They obviously also have a confinement division, the application division, we don't have that here, so, you know, let's just say the sheriff's office had three hundred policy procedures. We may only have a hundred and fifty, because we're smaller and don't have some of these things done.
The, uh, implementation fee, uh, does that include the customized for our operation here?
Yes, so what would happen is I would send them, um, information ahead of time. On our organization, they would go through and they would make those changes and then every week. They would send me, let's say, ten policy procedures and I would go through those ten policy procedures, make sure that they are what we want and they fit the town. Once I make those changes, then I actually have a, uh, be like a Zoom meeting. With a couple of representative from their company, we discuss the changes, um, they make sure they're in compliance with all the laws and everything like that. And then they would, um, formalize those policy procedures, so every week he would go over a set number of policies and procedures, um, until they do. Finish with the whole, the whole thing. And that could take, you know, maybe three or four months or it could take six months, depending on how many policies and procedures they fill it. Would cover the town for everything that we do.
How long did you say sheriff's purpose means?
Uh, sheriff's department doing this, I think for about a few years now.
About two, did the, did the annual fee going up?
It has not as of yet, um, no, I said that's always something that annual fees or subscriptions that you.
Good, good level.
Okay, yeah.
Well, Nathan, I can suggest that, uh, follow up the insurance to see if there's any, uh, benefit. From an insurance standpoint, from our premiums, if this program, I just, we're all curious if, uh. Paid for with reduction in insurance.
Yeah, that was a discussion we had prior.
Oh, was it? Okay, okay, so.
So then, what you're suggesting or what you're proposing is wait till we finalize the budget and. Take all this until January.
This was an information, yes, this was the information, uh, there is. Being fully transparent, if we look at the budget and if there's still something in there that is here, then maybe we start. The implementation this year and roll it into twenty twenty four, like Chris said, it could take three to stick them up by the time they make through the whole process. So I think it's doing our due diligence as to when we, we decide if or. If, if or if not, we will.
And Chris, if, from my understanding, once we purchase the initial setup, we have that, so even if we do a one-year contract. We have already purchased that setup, so we have that.
We have that, yes, we.
That doesn't go away in the year two.
Correct, we just wouldn't get any updates to it, so.
Are you aware of any grants or funding out there that could help off center or?
Uh, not that I'm aware of, um, I know the sheriff's office was able to do it because they did it to the, and you got a sheriff's association as a collective group, so they got a. Discount, discount, yes, but yeah, there wasn't a grant or something like that that was up there, they just did it. Cause so many of them did, and they gotta, they gotta, just gotta bring it on.
Chris, what are the deliverables? When they go through and refresh your processes and procedures? Do you get an electronic copy of it or are they all residing online that, that we?
So we can do electronic copies of them or, um, they're all like, I have a sheriff's office that, um, they're all online, you do a log, you know, login and password like that to get to the policy procedures. Um, however, you can print them off, keep a hard copy of them, um. You can save them as a PDF or anything like that as well as that, if you wanted to go over, if I was questioning about them, but it's all, it's the internet-based, so that's done.
It is, and I'm just, I'm just building off of, so, all these question ones, if, if you choose not to pay the renewal fee. Do you actually have a product in your hand?
So the only product we would have in hand is you go in and print off or save them as a PDF on the computer or print them off on a hard copy. Um, but again, once you stop paying that subscription fee, they are no longer updated, so we're kind of, you would be back, basically back to where we are. Uh, let's say at, and I, when I had to go over in two thousand seventeen, we have them all hard copies, but they've never been updated. Over current flaw, things of that nature, so basically you'd go back to where we would be now. We'd have the hard copy and then it would fall back on me to go through and try to keep up with the case law, state statute, federal statute. Um, best practice is to try to keep them up to date again.
Right, so then they wouldn't be eligible.
No, they would not be.
No, I just know that has been an advantage to some other folks that use Lexipol. Is based on funding, a lot of towns or counties can't continue.
Yes, yeah.
So I wanted to clarify that that's what I had heard when I used the background on this.
Yeah, that's always, uh, that, obviously the fees could go up. Um, and then sustaining that program would be what would have to be looked at in the future, you know, it's two thousand, I would say two thousand dollars. Now, ten years from now, it could be a five thousand dollar yearly subscription, I don't, I don't know what, how much price, what that is all the cost.
Thanks.
So.
Right, but the risk that we're mitigating. Um, by, by pursuing this is litigation that may come out of.
Yes.
Uh, and all pers- acting against them all procedures, but.
Inconsistency in training across.
Yes.
All the staff.
So if you, if you stopped and you didn't do the updates, now your risk comes back.
No, I understand, potentially, yeah.
You just have the potential for having a policy that may be out of date because they haven't been updated. And if you're following that policy that's not updated, you may be in violation of a state statute or federal statute or something like that.
Sounds like, sounds like we're, we're carrying that risk today.
Yeah. Yes. And I'm just trying to minimize that as best as possible.
Thanks, Chris.
Cause Fremont, here's this, um, I don't think Fremont does, no, um, any other communities in the neighborhood, they all, they all, you know, go with that he does, you know, and. Alright, thanks.
Thank you, Chris.
Anything else? No, I think you are. Thank you, Chris.
Okay, thank you, Chris. See you.
So now we'll move to the approval of monthly reports, um, the minutes from the July eighteenth. Meeting and Nathan, have you been able to, you got some stuff up there, but.
We're gonna be going off of your guys' computers, my hard copies.
Okay. So the meeting minutes from July eighteenth. Were there any changes? Nathan, you mentioned that there were a couple of changes that were made and that's, is that on the file that's uploaded?
Yes. I did receive a few corrections. Uh, last night and this morning and all those corrections haven't been made. Um, if you guys see any other correction, please let me know and I can.
I have none.
So, um.
Hearing none, I would make a motion to, that the moment says, as written. This is Brent, I'll second that.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes, so those minutes are approved. Um, so Nathan, we're on to the July voucher registry on warrant.
Yes, on. This voucher, um, for this month, the period runs from July eighteenth, twenty twenty three through August fourteenth, twenty twenty three. On the general side, um, we've had forty one warrants. For a total of sixty one thousand four hundred and twenty nine dollars and forty eight cents. On the sewer side. We had a total of twenty one warrants for a total of forty six thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars and five cents. You will notice on the sewer side that there was a big payment to the town of Fremont. For sewage treatment of twenty eight thousand. In the month of July, that's when everybody's here, so we've been pumping a lot of stuff to Fremont. About what that big bill is for.
Eight thousand gallons.
Yeah, that's a lot. Um, me and guy also figured out what the NIPSCO bill was last month that we had a question on. So if you guys want any insights on that, we can fill you in, but we figured that out, is that all the bumps?
Yes.
George, you are right. Um. And, uh, everything else is pretty standard on here, so if you have any questions, please let me know. Uh, the only other thing, there is also the, the new. Uh, public case. That is on the general side, or last one, the ten thousand dollar fee, this month was seven thousand two twenty eight fee for the new public case. Um. But that is about all I have as far as, um, info about you.
Any questions for Nathan?
Uh, well, I, I have a couple of questions, but I think they're probably, I have more, more for you. Uh, we had a couple, uh, of invoices for parish and M and C, is that the subcontractor that?
Parish is the subcontractor for grinder regrinders, okay, or grinder changing, well, and M and C was the installation.
A new, a new grinder?
Yes.
Okay, alright, uh, so there's a good chance that with that Brody online now, a lot of parish would go away. Uh, the other question I have, uh, we had a couple of large electric bills, Kendall Electric for fifteen hundred. Um. Tim Simpson, Tom. Okay, Tom, for five hundred, I think there's another one on the other, another page.
Are those, or those are doing, those are buying breakers and then replacing them?
Re, doing the rewire so you have a breaker?
No, that's just replacing the breakers on a grinder pan.
So every time a breaker gets replaced?
Well, every time. So when we have a grinder go bad and it has an E one grinder in the hole.
Mm-hmm.
Those were set up on fifteen amp breakers. When we replace it with a Liberty Grinder. The grind, the Liberty Grinders pull about eighteen to nineteen amps, so we have to change it from a fifteen to a thirty amp breaker. That is where the cost of those breakers comes from and the changing, okay.
That's it, thank you.
Any other questions for Nathan?
Uh, yeah, just one, um. Notice when we're listing over in the description, the numbers, can we just, so we gave like.
Uh, it's six.
At eight, five oh five, eight fifty, six eighty five, seventy, eighty, five hundred, are those the cottages that require work at?
Yes.
Is that what you, you broke them down that way?
Yeah.
I was just curious, just wanted.
So you're not gonna, I'm not gonna build a tree member where that actually was, but yeah.
And a couple of these, you will see, uh, uh, I have listed a C invoice, of those. It's a pretty long, he's got it written down by, uh, there's, so if you want to see individual break, individual breakdown of the bill, I have it, but.
But you did with that last night, I saw the one that said eight forty eight, um, South River Lake Drive, so I figured that your other one that had.
But you did with that last night. I saw the one that said eight forty-eight, um, South River Lake Drive. So I figured that your other one that had them all, I just wanted to make sure that it's. I appreciate it because it's nice, it's, it's nice to know.
Yeah, and the ones that, like I said, are too long with Paris, put C.
And the other thing I've been doing is when I'm out and about. Doing locates or whatever, if I had, if I open that. Uh, control panel up to do the locate and I see a fifteen amp breaker in there. Just out of, just so I know in my mind, I open the lid and see if it does have. A Liberty or an E one in there. And if it has Liberty, I have time to change it because when we first, when Bob first started putting those in. He did not realize that. So there was quite a few that got put in and didn't get changed over. And they haven't caused a problem yet, but. You know, it'll save us getting called out at nine o'clock at night just because the breaker tripped.
Mm-hmm. Hearing no, so I was, I just kinda just to re- repeat what I heard. Every time you see a fifteen amp breaker, you put it on the change out list.
Not only if there is a Liberty pump in there. If it's still got an E one pump, I leave it alone. And then when I change it.
When you change the pump.
Hey, when you're out here this week, Scott.
So it's not an emergency call for him either.
Right. We try to, if I can get a grinder running without him coming out to change it, I don't call him out at night to change it or anything.
Alright, thanks.
So just like, uh, um, George, you mentioned sixty-eight thousand gallons.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but it was actually ninety-seven.
Okay, okay.
Ninety-seven thousand.
Thank you very much.
The only reason I wanted to bring that, uh, uh, is that later tonight, we're gonna be looking at. Uh, replacement pumps, as we've seen. Um, fairly high failure rate of spirits.
And then mostly then E one pumps.
And ninety-seven thousand is the highest number of any year in the past.
Yeah, so. And that is a three hundred and sixteen percent increase over May. It was May, June, July, August.
Yeah.
So, okay, thank you, thank you for the correcting, Dan. Hearing no more on, no more questions on vouchers, I would make a motion to approve as presented.
We have a motion, we have a second?
George, I'll second the motion.
Alright, a motion and a second. All those in favor are signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion passes. Now we'll go on to unfinished business and Brent, I believe you're up with the golf cart and the parking update.
Well, I got a chuckle out of you last night, so I'm gonna hopefully give everybody else a chuckle. I don't remember who said it. But when I was laying out the timeline last week and you said, Rick, that is our last meeting, you said, Rick, that's pretty aggressive. And I said, we can do it. Well, schedules in the line. So, but, uh, as a good update. We do have both final versions ready. Uh, they were in the packet, so everybody can take a look at them. We pulled the two items out of the golf cart that were discussed last month. Everything's good to go there. And then you can see on the parking ordinance. Where instead of just one section referencing to three different scenarios. There are now three paragraphs separating them out because they have different timelines and different things, there's different services associated to them. So council felt more, or our council felt more. Um, comfortable moving forward, having those separated out versus having this one. So now Nate's got all the information that he needs and as we kind of go through the meeting and discuss September. There is a option that if we have two meetings, we can have both of these ordinance in one and ran through and read. And have, we have plenty of time if we want to have. One of the meetings early in September versus later or vice versa. We have. The proper time to go around to get everything out there and have it on one of the September.
So these will be ready by the end of the month, would you say?
They're ready now.
Okay.
Cause they've got the ordinance numbers.
Legal councils.
Yeah, they've already, yeah, yeah, yeah. Those, the versions that you guys got are good. Except I don't believe we have the ordinance numbers.
Numbers.
Yeah, the numbers.
Podcast. We all have the ordinance numbers. I don't know why we have them.
So maybe we could get that.
Yep, I'll get those and I'll throw those in the next one.
And we have to have those published for ten days, correct?
Yes.
So I'm gonna get those published out by end of week.
That'd be great. Thank you, Nathan.
That way we, that we can start like, Nate and I talked about that, that way if we want to have a meeting in early September, we'll party meet that ten day requirement.
Yeah, makes sense just to get it, especially if we're ready and we've all seen it numerous times. So that's great.
So the golf cart will be, uh, twenty twenty-three dash eleven. And parking will be twenty twenty-three dash twelve.
Thank you, Brent. Any questions for Brent? My golf cart.
Uh, any thoughts on how to broadcast this change?
Yeah, Nate and I actually had a discussion on that as well. We were talking about the postings. Um, we talked a guy about having them posted. And, uh, by the speed signs in each ward, sending out a reach alert. And then have it posted at the bulletin board here as well.
Of actual signage.
Yeah, and I could put it at the Marina's bill as well. Cause that's kind of how we love to put our, our public notices. Is at the Marina and generals for.
I'm just thinking about, um, providers. How do they get the order without getting a ticket? Cause particularly in parking, there is no escalation. It's your first offense is a ticket. So I just didn't, I didn't know how we were gonna communicate it to them.
And all the ordinance should, should be available on. General contractors typically try to familiar, typically try to familiarize themselves with the ordinance that they will be dealing with. Because I've been asked point blank when we did the initial research. If we're going to make sure they're available online because we reached out to several different builders. When it came to the parking ordinances. And that was one thing that a couple of them said, hey, you're, it's gonna get updated, right? If you guys change things, it's gonna be on there. So. They're using that tool as a resource too.
What about it being a packet or a little pamphlet right in where they come in to get all their permits?
Hey.
And it's, hey. You need to look at this.
It should be something that Robert goes over with them when they come in.
Yeah, I think that, that does a lot, but it does, definitely, it might be.
Well, we, I wonder. You do all those on it, we can just.
Yeah.
Pamphlet.
Something.
Yes, have a couple of copies of it.
No, we could be doing that now.
Yeah, I can start passing off the loan interest and land interest.
Does she know who they are?
Call them, cause that is the difference. Cause you get the, well, I get half. And then get it perfect.
Right. Yeah, exactly. So we can make sure that Robert has that and includes that in the packet too, um, the builders that are coming in.
Well, the builders, he should be reviewing, uh, parking spots, uh, part of the I, ILP is, you have to have so many slots and hopefully that's highlighted. And then include that with it. And we have some key vendors, uh, we know who they are. Home lumber truck, uh, is here daily, several times a day and.
ABC owners here daily right now.
Yeah, yeah. So as we see those drivers, we can slip them.
And we might also want to talk to Jen about the golf cart changes going on, you know, not just a reach alert. But having a link on, you know, the website. So people are aware of it. Wonderful. Thank you for staying on it, Brent.
Already been pushing as fast as ever.
No. Alright.
Tight, tight frame. I agree with whoever made that comment.
Um, or we're on the HR hiring procedures and update.
Yep, uh, first of all, pardon the red face. Uh, I have a copy for everybody. This is on my desk at home. So, uh, but, uh, that being said, what I'll do is when I get back, just emailing you a copy of this. Uh, tonight, uh, it, it wouldn't even be reasonable to discuss it. I just wanted to, uh, touch on the subject, get it on our radar. And then bring it back in September for a, a deeper dive discussion. But. Uh, a while back, I think I sent you all a copy of a, uh, email that, uh, I got from our consultant, our HR consultant. Who basically said that we don't need to have council approval or an executive committee to hire an employee. And it was, uh, we didn't lose any employees because of the current process of. Of getting executive committee and council, but, uh, it did put us in a bind trying to coordinate. Uh, we'd have somebody and then they gathered the five of us together. Uh, I just thought that it was an overkill, uh, of, of a hiring, uh, tech. Tech. So, uh, basically what I wrote on this is a, uh, ten or eleven point procedure. And I'm not gonna read the whole thing, but, uh, this would apply to hourly salary employees, uh, new positions or replacements. Uh, the responsibility, the responsible parties would be the manager of the employee. And or the town council member responsible for that area. Uh, the town council member charged and the town council member charged with human resources today is myself. Uh, the procedure is number one, notify the town council member responsible for, for HR when the position opens. Either a new, uh, new position opens, hopefully I'd be aware of it, uh, in this tenure. Or, uh, somebody turn, gets terminated like we had a couple of months ago. Uh, the first thing that the HR manager should do is, uh, conduct an exit interview. I think it's important to sit down, what happened? Why are you leaving us? Why? You know, make sure that they understand it was a termination, why they were terminated. Try to minimize any legal, uh, unemployment compensation that, that could come our way, sort of that, to validate and document it. Um, the next thing we would, uh, review is current job description for that. See if there's anything that needs to be modified with the, with the hiring manager. Is who we've worked with, who I've worked with, the HR and hiring manager. And then it doesn't need to be modified, uh, the HR person would draft a recruiting advertisement, review with the manager and then get it posted. Uh, we had great success with the D, uh, I can't say enough about it. The cost is right, zero. And we had, I think it was a, around a hundred and twenty-five responses over. Uh, three months and we, and we tried to interview about twelve, about ten percent. Uh, we had four or five, just absolutely no show. One six, with the third, one day we had three lined up and not a soul came in. Um, another case, uh, I don't want to draw this out, but we were ready to make an offer and the guy just. Uh, separated. I wrote him, called him, texted him, are you okay?
You found him.
He was in jail.
Well. It's too bad you called me because I watched their website.
That's where he is.
Last time I had to talk to the sheriff, it was on an after website. Okay, but anyway, back, back to what, what we're doing here. Just to fast forward through this, when we get down to, uh, fire, finding the candidate. Um, that would be between the hiring manager, uh, the town council member who's responsible for that area. Uh, the HR and clerk treasurer for benefits and compensation. When there's consensus across that line, then we have, if you know. Package to, to offer somebody. But we have to have consensus. If, if we can't get consensus, then we're gonna have to maybe kick it upstairs and call the council together, but. I hope it wouldn't come to that. If, if the person's right, it should be right for all. And, uh, the, uh, the acquiring manager, the clerk treasurer would actually make the job offer, uh, and determine the start date. And the last point I have on this is like, so I'll get you a copy, uh, tonight or in the morning. Uh, a council member may contact any of the above individuals during the above procedural step. So if, if. Uh, council member, ooh, I hear something I don't like, or I've seen them, the chime in, you know, it, it doesn't keep council members out. But this way we can just get it from, uh, the search to the hiring without bringing the whole council in to look at it.
And I think the other thing too on that, George, I think we'll need to add that to the employee handbook.
Yeah.
But, so, just if you, if you could keep.
Okay. So I'll get this out, uh, soon and, uh. Whatever feedback you like, I'll blind copy you so we don't blindly open door and respond individually back to you. And then we'll get it on to Jen for next one.
Brent has something he wants to thank.
Yeah, I'm not quite sure. Sorry, Todd, yeah. Would you be opposed to certain positions? Being reviewed by the full council?
Um, no, I, yeah, I, there's.
I think.
There's probably some out there and that would be, I think, a, a judgment of, uh, probably the, the HR and feedback from the council. So. Again, you drop down to my eleven point, council members may contact it. And if we know that a position opens up, uh, a key position, then yeah, we'll probably need the entire council.
And the reason, the reason I said that is because of my responsibilities and I.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think that it is important to have countless consensus.
Yeah.
That we're hiring a new deputy.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Somebody like that, I think.
I know, I, I remember what, what, uh, he hits, it's a very unique. And it's that position, you're not gonna run an ad. You know?
Some of you don't want to party fight. Making sure, like I said, I, that would be one that I think I would appreciate.
And there are some pretty cool positions here. I mean, we're not talking about a lot of folks, though, you know, before the, no, I mean.
I know, absolutely.
Okay.
No.
I'll get this, we had ten comments to follow, so.
Yeah, as long as, uh, Kristen has chimed in and is okay with that, then.
By sending her response and, and, um, it was very, very clear. So. Alright, that's it. My apologies for not having a copy tonight.
That's alright, we'll just put that back. Alright, Dan, you're up.
Alright.
CCMG.
CCMG updates that like to share. And then get agreement on a change management process. Uh, first of all, the, the revised schedule has been, uh, provided to the OZ and, and to the, and now to the town. It was posted on the, uh, webpage about a week ago under announcements. And, uh, just, uh, as a summary, you'll see that the basic approach that API is now. Gonna take is, is getting through some of the preliminaries, uh, followed by excavation and placement of a stone. Followed by an intermediate pavement. And that will be completed for each project site serially. Um, and then they will come back, uh, once and do all the final paving. On all product sites in the same day or two. And. Restoration that, that will be just done along the way, um, as weather allows and, and, uh, resources are available. So the, uh, the order is as prescribed by the, uh, and recommended by the road committee. It, uh, we begin with quiet harbor on September eleventh, uh, through the nineteenth. Uh, West Clear Lake Drive, uh, coming off of Lakeview is the second project that follows, uh, on September nineteenth through the twenty-sixth. And West Clear Lake Drive, uh, coming off of seven hundred east is September twenty-sixth, now through October tenth. So you'll notice that the, that the projects actually bleed into October now. All finished pavement then will be currently scheduled to be completed October eleventh and twelfth. So in theory, we will be done. Uh, in about a month's time. Uh, over September and the first couple of weeks of October. Um, this brings me to a second and separate topic, which is.
Good morning. We'll get started here momentarily. We'll just let a few more people. Or not.
Um, and that is, uh, we held a, uh, a road committee meeting last night where we, uh, have, uh. Talked in the past about taking a look, a little closer look at, uh, drainage. Uh, designs that were recommended as part of this, uh, this year's, uh, CCMG projects. Um, and, uh, we have one recommendation to forward to council for change. Um, just, uh, just as a little bit of context and background, the road committee, uh, I think as everyone knows, has established a set of governing requirements. Which includes a balanced approach, uh, between cost, uh, uh, design, capacity and physical constraints to, uh, the various drainage. Uh, challenges that we have around the lake. And it also ensures that if, if, uh, if used, will, uh, be a consistent design. Uh, solution that comes out. So no particular area gets a more elaborate design than any other area. It gets what's appropriate, uh, for the demands. Uh, so, uh, second point is the road committee conformed in assessment of the drainage design of all of the, uh, plans twenty twenty-three.
Uh, plans twenty twenty-three CCMG projects. Using those newly developed governing requirements in part to stress test them, to make sure that the the requirements. Were complete. Uh, they would drive you to a solution. Uh, given all the constraints, et cetera. Uh, if it did pass that test. And with that regards, uh, we finished that exercise last night looking uh, at twenty-two West Clear Lake Drive. Um, the current design that we have, uh, there is essentially a drainage pipe that connects the open. Air ditch on the north side, um. Which provides uh, watershed access to. Um acreage uh, to the north between West Clear Lake Drive and six seventy-five North. Uh, County Road and then a small amount of area. Um, wetland on the north side of six seventy-five, so. All of that water, uh, when we get storm events will make its way down into that open ditch, the drainage approach. Uh, that we have currently approved, um, is to run a pipe under West Clear Lake Drive. And out through the seawall into the uh, into the um. Uh.
Chain, chain.
Thanks, plus a word there. Uh, that design um, is appropriate, um. Uh, that was one uh, essentially conclusion last night. Uh, we did trade that off for an open air uh, ditch, but uh. Um, there are several requirements and and constraints that uh, make that really not feeable. Um, we're down about five feet deep. Uh, is where we would need to be, so it just becomes very problematic. Um, uh, to leave that as an open air, so the road committee is. Is indeed um. Uh, recommending a drain line. Uh, as currently designed, but they challenged the size of the drain line, that's where the real change is. I want to recognize that DLZ did a great job in in the design that they proposed. The big difference is it's inconsistent uh, with the governing requirements that we've developed. So we went back through it, um, imposing those governing uh, requirements. And essentially what we uh, what we determined is that we could get uh, away with a smaller diameter pipe. Currently, there's a twenty-one inch. Specified pipe diameter for that. Uh, the reasons for that is it was a hundred year storm event. That was uh, supplying that, there was a lot of. Memory uh, from a flood uh, back in nineteen seventy-nine, I think, uh. And the amount of acreage that went into that, that was considered as part of the design. Presented that much water. Um. But uh, with our governing requirements, we're imposing a ten year storm event. So that was a big difference. And we were only uh, uh, considering as a water input, the acreage as I described earlier. And that gets us down to a twelve inch uh, pipe. The other advantage with the twelve inch pipe is that we can eliminate one of the uh. Um, catch basins uh, that was out towards the channel. Uh, that is there primarily in in the current design uh, to uh, allow us to transition slope. Uh, in pipe, as you approached the seawall. It allowed you to get the right. Angle of slope. Uh, as opposed to carrying that angle all the way back to the north side of the river. Okay. Um, and so uh, with that said, uh. That's the, that's essentially the change that the road committee would like to. Um, recommend that council consider. Authorizing us to change that, so it's a change in diameter from twenty-one to twelve inches. Uh, eliminate that second catch basin. And um, and then on top of where that pipe would run, we have an easement, it's fourteen feet. Um, we would also contour that slightly, um, just in case, um. We had uh. A uh, an R type rainfall event, um, and we would be able to at least transfer it through the open air. Uh. Open swale, so. Uh, any questions on the descriptions?
No, I I think this is, you know, it's great to hear that everybody worked together to take in some of the feedback. Um, that was initially proposed by some of the residents at the meetings. And I noticed also at the conservancy annual meeting, they had talked about since some of the work that the conservancy had done over there. But the water problem was not what it used to be, so that sounds aligned too with what. You all found.
Yeah. The uh, the only other uh, question that I have and it deals with one of my constituents and important one. And that's uh, Cottage fifty-two, which has a major water problem. Uh, I don't know if if uh, you've talked to them, that DLZ has has talked to them, but uh, basically my understanding is. And this needs to be backed up by engineering, but there is an eight inch. Uh, pipe that goes under the uh. Lake accessory driveway of Cottage twenty-two. That transitions to a six inch that goes under the road. And then it steps down to something around a four inch. That goes to the lake. And it's just passed backwards from the way pipes should run. You know, as it moves forward, it should get larger and larger as it picks up more volume. Uh, guy, I I don't know if you, it was you or Bob Hall, but I was told that the town put that four inch pipe.
That was long before either one of us.
Was it? Okay, it was put in by by the town. Uh, a four inch pipe, and that is a choke point uh, at the bottom of that hill. Uh, it's not the, it's not the homeowner's problem, it is not the homeowner's problem because uh, the water pressure will actually. Uh, it gets so high that he has a stream of water in his. Family room, which used to be a carport, coming out of the drain upwards of three feet when when the rains are coming. Um. I, I think we need to address that, uh, while we're tearing up the roads. Uh, and and resolve that, it just, it's been getting worse. And worse because of the garages. Uphill from him. And each time we add a garage, his water issue has gotten greater and it's just. He is at wit's end and I'm afraid that if we don't deal with it. We're going to deal with it somewhere else and I'd rather deal with it here in the roads and and other areas.
So would it be possible, um. For us to stick with what Dan had started on the proposal and then open and have questions further on. The road. Dan, is that how it would? Do you like to do it that way?
Yeah, that would like.
If we could just do that, not just so we could stay on the twenty-two. Um, train and or with that, since George's versus Dan's asking. For us to approve that and then we can have a conversation about the fifty-two West Clear Lake. Would that be?
As long as the uh, twenty-two approval wasn't final. I mean, if the fire drove. Agreements go here.
I don't know what that.
Yeah, I know.
Well, if uh, if you want to uh, pick a vote. On what was just presented. Okay, but we still need to visit. I, uh, fifty-two.
Absolutely, I, I know, if I, but I'm just.
I just didn't want to vote.
No, 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 I'm just saying, no, I just want to keep. Sticking with what Dan is talking about on the drain at twenty-two because you're asking council for a vote on that.
I am getting there.
Uh, yeah, and so if, let's just.
Okay.
Hold on, the fifty-two discussion, if that's all right.
Mm-hmm.
If, if there's no more questions on the uh. Recommendation at twenty-two West Clear Lake Drive, I would move to approve the change. As described to the drainage design. Uh, at twenty-two West Clear Lake uh, Drive.
This is Brent Slusser, I will second that, Dan.
We have a motion on the table on those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye, aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes, so.
I abstained.
Oh, you abstained, George. On the twenty-two.
Does pass.
Is there a reason?
There's, there's a whole history here, reasons. Uh. The, the uh. Uh, road committee has done a great job. Uh, I still go back to uh, where this whole thing originated. And nobody's come forward to tell me yet. And I've asked the town council, one, I've asked the uh. Road group once and uh, DLZ was there and nobody will tell me who initiated the roads. In twenty twenty-three for Clear Lake, and that is totally unacceptable to my standards. Okay, I don't know what the top secret is, but you know, if you don't have the guts to. Speak. Then I, I think that's not disappointing.
Absolutely.
Okay, are, is there going to be a motion to change the agenda? To include. This new topic?
Fifty-two.
Otherwise I have to move on.
Well. Can't the fifty-two discussion be part of, is it a part of CCMG?
No, it's not included in that project. Uh, design.
Okay.
This is a new issue that's being being bring.
Brought forward.
Well, I would suggest that we uh, Dan, you go back to the road committee and and this with that because I. I'm. I am very concerned about what may happen if we do not resolve this problem with them. And again, it's, I can't say it any clearer.
Pertaining to fifty-two.
Fifty-two, it's, it's a major.
What was? What was? Born about four or five years ago, what was done?
They replaced the culvert under the road. His culvert collapsed.
I knew there was work there at some point in time over the last four or five years, so that was, you know, the culvert was. Replaced because it had collapsed, dude, just normal wear and tear.
Yeah, and it just is a uh. Corrugated culvert, it just broke down all time.
Well, I don't think.
Association to, is that in association to any of the drainage? That George is referencing right now to your knowledge?
It is attached to it, yes.
It is attached to it, so if it was addressed four or five years ago. It's not proper.
I just think that was in. It is terribly undersized.
Okay. Does anybody know if that was pushed forward from the resident or if that was pushed forward by town? No, grid collapsed.
Yeah. See, so that is the issue, there are a lot of statements being made, nobody knows where truth lies. And and oh, by the way, um, there's many different parameters that can be modified. Uh, to improve that situation. And there's uh, at least one enforcement opportunity that we have within UDO. That requires folks to maintain their own stormwater on their lots. So, uh. Uh, be happy to take it on the line and and discuss all of that because you're apparently needing the whole conversation. And should, holding an educated conversation. I can, I can, you know, of all, what all those.
Well, the, the real person that I need to deal with is is the homeowner to have that individual understand. What the town is doing, give, give for doing something, the homeowners need to know that.
What we are doing as part of the CCMG project uh, is installing passive swells. Passive swells along uh, that stretch of road. Are, will act like capacitors in a circuit in that they will hold water. Part of, uh, part of the issue is that the horizontal velocity of the water coming down the hill. In the narrow current uh, swell. Overwhelms the drain. Uh, at the entry point on the north side. Uh, Todd and I will take uh, an active role in sizing the passive swells to slow that horizontal velocity down. Deliver the water more appropriate for that drain. And that'll go a long way to resolve the problem with no additional costs to the town. Um. The second aspect is. The drain that's currently backing up is is on a uh. Adjacent lot, uh, currently owned, uh, currently owned. By Star Homes, actually, that's correct, and so uh, it seems reasonable to have a discussion there. About uh, the potential. Um. Changes, uh, if clearly the plan is to develop a lot. So. Those are two that we didn't, we did discuss last night at the road committee, okay?
Great, so it's on the radar with the road committee? It's like, I think that's something you can share, George, with the residents. And I think we've all known as those garages have been built up. Um, there has. Well, just.
Again, definitely. More, more of, more than I agree, there is some ownership in our zoning office, okay, and I've had the discussion with with Robert. As he's reviewing, uh, which he does, and he approves as part of the drawing, the drainage plan. It's insufficient to approve a drainage plan that says I'm going to route my water to an existing swell. That just carries it to somebody else's slot.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we really need to stick to. Our UDO, which says we've got a manager on water. Um, the swell is there for the purpose of water fed from the road. It's not for the purpose of watershed from the individual's lots. That's where we're getting into trouble.
Oh, yeah, addressing the watershed from the individual home would probably resolve the downstream problem.
It would. Okay.
Thank you, George, for bringing it up, and thanks, everybody, for the discussion and guy, you're as well. So, Dan, continue, please.
Um, I also wanted to make note tonight, um, that uh, within the next week or two, we are going to be painting. Uh, those swales, uh, at each of their employed on each of these stretches of roads, it'll be a nice bright pink paint. Uh, this is for one purpose, and that's really to communicate to the residents that will be affected. Who may have currently nice smooth lawns that go right up to the, to the road. Um, and we're going to be, you know, putting in a swell. Okay, so that's going to be happening over the next couple of weeks, I, I will coordinate a message through. Uh, Reach Alert and uh, on the webpage with Jen.
Yeah, and on the webpage, if we can maybe put it on the front, so it's not in announcements, uh, similar to what we did, um. With the. Speed sign, I just think this is something that's pretty significant, especially. Um, if you live in that area or those of us, whether you're biking or whatever you're doing around the lake. So if we could just have that go on the very front homepage, um, I don't. I think would be, I don't know what your thoughts are, Dan, I.
That's correct.
Eventually move it, but I think for the time being, that's with all that's going on. Um, that will hopefully help. Jen getting phone calls, guy getting stopped, um. And if, if there's things that people need, you know, information, guys, let us know or let Jen know, so we can update accordingly.
At long time. Um. Could you let me know what? Things that you were starting for the different areas?
Yeah.
Yeah, if you go to announcements and road projects on the webpage, it would be at all, it's all still. Okay, uh, the other note that I wanted to to communicate is that Todd and I have have now held two uh, two working sessions with the residents. Uh, that are, uh, have uh, lots that were. Um, over on West Clear Lake Drive off of, like, you know. Drives that, uh, you know, we've targeted to route. Deliberately route the road runoff uh, over their lots in the roundway. And. The current design calls for a uh, an easement. That straddles the properties of Zeller and McCarroll. Um, and uh, we are talking to those, as I said, we've held two discussions, um. Uh, the common ground by which we're finding. Uh, forward progress on is that uh. It's a problem. And it's a long-term problem. Uh, they don't like the problem. We don't like the problem. And so we're working together to find the the right solution. Uh, the solution is, again, a swell. It's a matter of where it's located. Uh, Todd and I, um, took uh, an action to. Uh, try and get some more topographical uh, type data to to. To make sure that the. To make sure that the that the details are supporting or what drive the water, okay? Uh we also took an action to measure uh effectively run a little engineering study on how the water drains from the top of the hill. And what water actually makes it down to the bottom. So we've got that design and we're waiting for a good rainstorm, so that's the latest on that. Uh we should be able to close by the time to close on. And I do want to thank the residents for really, as I, as I have said earlier, the better design comes together. When we can work together and uh and uh that's happening, so happy to report. Okay, a lesson learned uh uh from years past. Is is uh the lack of a change management process, okay? Some context for what I mean by this is we move into the construction phase on the twenty twenty-three projects. We want to put in place a change manager process for. Our representative DLC that follow should issues arise requiring a change to the current approved design. Um, this is uh dealing with unknown unknowns that are gonna be discovered along the way, weather, whatever the case. Uh changes could involve uh the categories of design, cost and schedule, okay? Town elected officials and staff need to be aware of all changes, however, not all officials and staff need to be involved in the time sensitive approval process. We've effectively got a contractor on site that come to Todd with an issue. We need to the best of our ability give him the authority to make decisions. Or a short provide him a short list of people he can call to get a decision and keep things moving. So that's what this change management process is really geared to do um. So uh I've provided it, it was provided, it's actually uh a part of the. Prioritization process that was released and I mentioned it in our last uh meeting, so I just pulled it out. Uh and gave uh counsel uh a preview of what that um what we're talking about, so. Um it's uh essentially assigns town approvers to varying degrees, it it says exactly what DLC is able to approve without any other. Considerations by the town and then it escalates up in varying degrees of change. Which town officials uh need to be involved uh in the decision to approve or not to approve, okay? Um, did everybody get a chance to look at it? If so, I won't go through it here. Are there any questions about it?
There's, there's one, one item, I don't understand the English use to put it in many different words, uh it's eleven point one point four point three. Contract values increasing overall contract values, is that inflation?
No, that's uh if a a change is required. Um that can't be worked out within the approved cost of the project.
Mm-hmm.
Um, contract value in the sense to API.
It's like a run over, it's a run over. Okay, okay. I was struggling with inflation there and I couldn't quite get my head on that, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
No, makes sense, it's similar to what, you know, George proposed with the H R here.
Exactly, yeah. I'm finding George and I think. Any other, any other questions? All right, so there are no questions um and no changes, I move to approve uh for news. During the twenty twenty-three CCMG project construction phase, the change management process has driven.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
This is Brennan, I will second that.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, hearing none, change management.
Last item for CCMG, uh on twenty, on July twenty-eighth, a special council meeting, so approving the twenty twenty-four. CCMG project and application. One of the lessons learned from the twenty twenty-three CCMG project was to uh eliminate the risk of inclement weather. Affecting our survey activities. Uh just to jog memories, we tried to get that done, it was, I think, March timeframe, it granted the snow, it ran. Weather and actually pushed uh the completion of that. Um that activity uh if delayed um drives the completion of the final design, it drives the approval by the town. And it drives the bid, it drives the award, I mean, it's just, uh it's a real domino effect. And we've got the one thing that can't be changed is in Dodge requirement when all that has to be. So, um the lesson we learned is to pull that forward um and get that done um. Uh it would be prior to formal approval by end of our application, but we would get it done this year um. And have it available to support the design activities, which would be contingent on end-up approval. And so, any questions?
Doing it uh early, it uh would not get sale dated when we're ready to use it, no.
And you discussed this at the last meeting, correct?
Okay. So, um hearing no additional questions, I would move to authorize DLC uh to schedule the survey of the twenty twenty-four CCMG. Project, which is Lakeview Drive in the next uh few months.
We have a motion, is there a second? If not, I will second that. We have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye, aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion passes, there you go, Todd.
That's it for CCMG.
I have one question, the pre-construction meeting with API. Date, time.
It's uh just posted uh next Tuesday.
Oh, was it in the document? Under announcements, I didn't see that.
Uh, let's see, you were gonna talk to Jen to get associated, where did it come?
And you sent Jen an email and me and I did, well, she wasn't here Thursday and Friday.
Okay, let's think.
So that's okay. Moving forward, so the API pre-construction meeting will be here next Tuesday. So that is August twenty-second. Here.
Here, yep.
And at what time?
Six P M.
Six P M on Tuesday. Okay, um Nathan, I'm gonna ask if you can work. Um we need to make sure Jen gets that on the website ASAP on the calendar.
I have four things for Jen. Yeah, that's what I thought. Okay, well, I'll tell you.
Well, well, yeah, it's the, let's just follow up on that. Cause we would like to have that, like, give people two weeks notice and. Right, that was my only question, anybody have any other questions for Dan? All right, hearing none, we will move on to new business. Um I think police, let's a poll, we can, we've had that discussion, right, are you okay with where we are on that?
Yes.
Is there anything you want to add?
No, I think it was more information for tonight's meeting.
Right, so we'll move to the condo lift station, so Guy, you're up.
Yeah, we already talked about it, it's, it's the only thing that's new is like the cost of the bus, we could find us where the money's coming from, so.
Right, cause we talked about that, the presentation was shown at the last meeting, it was not approved until, you know, we wanted to have an idea where the monies. Were coming from, so if you could just refresh what the dollar amount was gonna be and where the funding was going to.
Okay.
I got it, phone cost is ninety-six thousand nine hundred sixty-one dollars. We are going to use um the rest of our A R P funds, which um the total amount that we have left of those funds. Twenty-three thousand nine hundred twenty-five dollars, that's fund number one three six five point zero zero. Um, so I had talked to Dan and everybody and let's see if I could get placed to zero out those funds for this project. Um then the other portion is gonna come out of sewer depreciations team equipment funds, that amount will be seventy-three thousand thirty-six dollars even. And that fund number is one four five one point zero zero.
Great.
So I have a, I have a question, sure, um, the uh the A R P funds. Um. I I think that there is an error in what's remaining, I think it's actually more than that, Nathan.
Yeah, I I heard you say that before, where are you getting your?
Yeah, so if you go to the fund report. For 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 this that you just published. The fund report under A R P, which was twenty-four oh one, uh chose fifty-five thousand three hundred and eighty-four. Dollars, thirty-seventy-four cents, which is actually the remaining. Of the seventy-four.
So maybe the appropriation account for the A R P fund, we had twenty-three thousand.
That's what's remaining on a on a G I S portion that was uh allocated by council last year. We we put thirty-six thousand in that.
I got you.
Bucket uh in the twenty-three, so the twenty-three was actually um not the correct number.
I guess.
What the correct number is, it was um, is the uh C five three four seventy-four? No, it is forty-one thousand nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars and forty cents, which is essentially. The A R P money that was granted to Clear Lake minus the thirty-six that we've allocated. To the G I S, to the G I S.
But what I don't bring in.
It's forty-one thousand nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars and forty cents. And then you, assuming council approves the use of A R P funds for this project, you would create another line item underneath. The radar or the G I S.
Yeah.
With that. And then the balance of uh this the sewer utility depreciation area is fifty-five thousand. Oh, four zero six and sixty cents, all right.
So A R P forty-one nine fifty-nine forty cents, sewer appreciation fifty-five oh forty and sixty cents.
So I would, I would uh first of all, I would make a motion, are there any questions before?
No, I can, you presented it clearly last month.
Okay, so I would move um to approve. A R P funds in the amount of forty-one thousand nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars and forty cents. To be applied to the condo lift station project. As described in the uh in the attachment.
We have a motion, we have a second?
This is George, I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carries.
And I would make a uh a motion to approve uh the balance of funding requirements of fifty-five thousand. Oh, four zero uh and sixty cents from the sewer utility depreciation fund. Or used in the condo lift station project as described in the attachment. Totally then ninety-seven thousand dollars of approved funding for the project.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
This is Brennan, I'll say it.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, there you go, Guy. Okay, so the next, um we move on to uh.
Quick, quick question, uh Guy, when do you think that's gonna be undertaken?
It'll be October, November, October, November, July.
Will we send like a memo to the folks in the condo, just?
I've already then, I've already told Dan. That it's probably going to have to be related for everything to be finalized.
Excellent, thank you, Guy.
And he is very really appreciative of it.
Oh, I'm sure, I'm sure everyone in there is, um George, any other questions? Okay, so we'll move on to perfectly new grinders, so Guy, that would be yours.
Well, we have had a massive run of grinders between storms and. Power outages and everything else. I was feeling really good about myself until we went into the month of July, about only granny going on hand, we are down to. I believe I have twelve total on hand as of right now, um. With another holiday weekend approaching soon. It, you know, the track record we're on right now, I could use up that whole supply next month. So I would like to order twelve and twelve more. At a cost of three thousand one hundred and forty-one dollars each for a total of thirty-seven thousand six hundred and ninety-two dollars. That's out of fund, one, two, three, two.
Is this on track for what we had planned for the year, Guy, how does that compare with problem?
Normally.
What we budgeted.
We usually plan for about thirty-six a year. And we are at that already. Uh, you replaced thirty-one, I think, here today. And we're done, and shit, though, that's the hours, pretty good, Jerry, got months, couple months to go, I show that.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. And the money is there in the.
Yeah, that in that fund, we have a hundred and twelve thousand three hundred and six sixty-seven left. But after that, uh thirty-seven thousand. Will be right around eighty grand.
And look, there's some other items that you also.
Yeah, there's more to just the grinder, yeah. Yeah, if you wanna keep going, go ahead.
Do it all together, I think we should.
Well, I was gonna say.
And let's keep, I think we should keep this separate, so.
Which one you want to do next?
No, no, we need to make a motion.
I think.
I will make the motion. purchase twelve Liberty Grinder pumps uh for a total of thirty-seven thousand six hundred and ninety-two dollars. Um from the uh sewer uh depreciation fund number sixty-two oh three. Which is different because the twelve thirty-two that they're quoting is the is a sub-line item to that.
Okay.
That's okay.
Thank you, Dan. So we.
This is Brennan, I'll make a second.
So we have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And I think one thing that um Guy, if we could ask, if in your monthly report. If you can maybe indicate how many we budgeted for and where we are, especially as we're moving into, that will help. Me stay on track, I don't know about anybody else, um just to have a perspective on how how to take it. That'd be great, thank you.
And Guy didn't say that you won't, you're not expected to buy any more. Grinders until maybe May of next year, that's what your expectation is, in March, I'm probably, yeah.
So get one more, so you got your back set.
Right. Great, okay, continue, Guy.
But it's only, I've only ever been one time where I was scrambling of having one grinder left out there. So, and I was not a good feeling.
Let's not have it be this year. Okay, so that was new grinders, that's all on new grinders, right? So we'll get to the rest when we do your monthly report.
Okay.
Okay, great, so we'll move on to monthly reports. Nathan, you are up with the continental report.
Yeah, all the uh appropriation, the fund and the revenue report is on file. Um, we've been crazy busy doing. Uh budget stuff, uh I've been doing three jobs a day. In my office, so if you really are interested in what, what, if you wanna find out whatever new, come over and talk to me. Um but yeah. Um, but yeah, all those fun reports are on record.
Anybody have any questions on any of the financials? Okay, and we've done a Marshall's report. Brent, uh, fire department report.
Okay, for the town of Clear Lake, we had thirteen total incidences containing. Five mutual aids. One lift assist or medical assist. One fire alarm, one CO2 investigation, and one down power line. We have one incident in the Clear Lake Township. And that was a vehicle accident with injury. We're moving forward with the fire contract and should be able to provide additional details at the, at one of these. Any questions?
So, um, sunny administrator's report. Robert's not here. I think we could just follow up with him.
I have one question before I'm an.
Yeah, we'll do it via email since he's unable to attend tonight. Superintendent's report.
And I had a total of a hundred and eighty-one hours worked. The, I had perish come out nine times to help with grinders. We issued two road cut permits, zero. Demo permits and two letters of non-objection. I did thirty-one locates. I had twelve alarm calls. I replaced nine grinders. I did not set any, or I didn't repair any. Which I would get to that later. And I set up five. I have two pumps completely assembled, ready to go in the system. I have ten box. And I have none of my green end pumps left. So I have a total of twelve pumps on hand right now. Ninety-seven, five, twenty-eight was my gallon, or was my average flow for the month. Uh. Sewer truck was driven a hundred and fifty-nine miles. Uh, the new grinders has already been taken care of. I have a quote for contacts. For the Liberty Grinders, um, we had multiple that got flooded out. And it showed it those contacts out. Inside that box and I can repair. Two of them right now and put them back into use. But I need those contacts to do so. I had the other parts on hand. But those were just, they've been extremely hard to find. And the only place I can actually get them is through TriStar, which is getting them directly through Liberty. And those were a hundred eleven seventy-nine each for a total. I wanted to order five. So I had a few on hand again, um, and the total on that would be five fifty-eight ninety-five.
Okay, I would like to make a motion uh, to approve uh, five hundred and fifty-nine dollars. Towards the purchase of five Liberty contact replacement parts. Uh, under a fund, parent fund number six-two-zero-three. This is Brent. I will second that.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed. Hearing none, motion passes.
And then the other thing I have. Is uh, the bio, bio blocks and the fog, or the fog blocks. And the uh, biodegreaser that I've been using for the last two years. Has made a major difference in the system. Um, I was actually in a grinder tank over the weekend. And there was no buildup on anything in it once I got it pumped down. Because we did have another check valve that we didn't. Um, so I have. A new quote for five pails of the degreaser. At a total of six hundred and fifty dollars and five cases of the bio blocks. At one thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars for a grand total of two thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars even.
What's the total?
Yeah, two. Well, stay straight, my fifteen seventy-five.
Fifty, fifteen seventy-five. No, that's okay. What's the number again?
Two, 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 five.
Two, 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 five.
Too many chews.
So I would make a motion to approve. Uh, purchase of a cleaner. And rapid release fog block, um, totaling two thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars. Uh, paid out of fund, uh, parent fund number six-two-zero-one. Is different than what you call out. That's for operational expenses. This is Brent. I will second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed. Hearing none. Motion passes.
Guy, you know, mine can be any big.
Do I?
Mine can be getting bigger if needed.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yours is. Yeah. Well, yours is already had, yours is had those blocks and. So, yeah. Um, yeah, I was, it was still not any less stinky, but I had a lot less things stuck to me when I came out of.
I don't wanna facialize. Are you done spending the money?
Then required that it involve scrubbing that sticky stuff off when I come out of there. The uh, little over a year ago, we had the hot water here in the, um, shop repaired. Uh, it is been in there since the building was put in, um. It had a calcium buildup in it. He goes, this is a temporary fix. He goes, within two years, you're gonna have to replace it. While I went to wash my hands the other day and I had water only. And I don't know if you've tried scrubbing that stuff off, but it needs extremely hot water to get. That off. And so I went back to Sycamore Plumbing. I've been extremely happy with the work they have done around here. Uh, he gives me a quote for a commercial tankless hot water heater. Uh, installation. He had to re, he's gonna have to reroute gas lines, water lines, and redo the exhaust system because it is now venting through P B C. Or the new ones are venting through P B C and this one is all vented through uh, metal. So he has to change everything around. Um, total material and labor cost was three thousand two hundred and ten dollars for that.
And that gives you the right capacity to do what you do.
Yes, with hot water, yeah. Tankless, you said, right? Yes, okay. We do not have room to put a. Uh, tank water here back there. Or a space container.
Okay, okay. So as you go, everybody's saying, we're replacing tankers?
Yes, we're replacing a tank with, with a tank. Okay.
Okay. And that company? And you've used Sycamore and Happy?
Yes, yeah, they're the one that did uh, heating and cooling for this room and. Put our new uh, modi heaters from barn out there last year. Very, very nice job.
And this is used primarily for sewer?
Yes.
Okay, so I would make a motion. Uh, to approve the purchase of a new tankless water heater. Uh, for the price of three thousand two hundred and ten dollars. Um, from uh, fund. Two, zero, one.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
This is Brent. I will second that.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed. Hearing none, motion carries. Okay, I would like to say I really appreciate the way this. Document was put together with the funds and the dollar amounts and the contractors. So I think that's a best practice if we can. Keep that moving forward and even if there's multiple bids, so that way we can all see it. We know there's money, you know, in the budget. I think that just makes our job easier and probably yours too, because you guys have already had the profession. So thank you.
Okay. And then.
Go, go ahead. I, I have a question for you.
Then the street department, uh, I put a total of a hundred and twenty-two miles on the track. And my new help started yesterday. I had been extremely impressed with his capabilities so far. Uh. This morning, you, you know, it was raining, couldn't really do anything else. I said, well, let's, I. We went to Menards, got our two-by-fours to build new barricades because we are down to. Four of them that are actually usable because they've been ran over and so many of them have been stolen in the last few years. And I kinda helped him get going on the first one and. I come back and they were all cut. They were splattered. They were screwed together. And he's got everything set up and ready to paint them all.
You mean, didn't have to draw them back three times?
Sorry. So, um, yesterday we started out locator. First thing in the morning after we got going on the uh. Replacing the check valve over there and M and C going on that. Um, we went and started locating and I kinda showed him the gist of it. I says, well, let's see what you do. And he went right on with it and was doing good. So.
Unless to these guys that smile of war, though, I've seen.
That's great. Glad it's working. Yeah.
It was a long time coming.
That's all right.
I, I have a, a question for Guy. Uh, Monday I came over to, to meet Brody and you guys were off on a mission to. Uh, in my chase looking for him, I was back in the shop. It looked like there's about twenty plus or minus, uh. Old uh, grinder pumps sitting in there. Are those to be disposed of?
Yes.
How do we dispose of them?
I usually call someone and they come pick them up.
Do we get money for those?
Sometimes we do, sometimes we don't. It depends because of the way they're. The way they are, there's so many pieces that like, you gotta, in order for them to be scrapped, you have to completely break them down. The plastic from them. All, because it's, it's got cast, it's got copper, it's got stainless, it's. Just short of a mess and most people don't even wanna mess with it because it's so much work to break them down.
Could I, could I have a uh, scrap individual come and look at them and see if they could bid on German recycling those force? If, probably they'll take them on, on a weight basis, I suspect, and possibly just a dump truck load. Uh, I'll have somebody come over. I'll, I'll let you know before we do it. But I, I suspect there's creative value in the copper windings and. And.
Getting it apart, because it, and nobody wants to mess with it because they're in a sewer.
But there, what's, what's out there now, a lot of the recyclers, they, they pulverize it. And they give you a bid on the gizmo and then that becomes their problem. They pulverize it. And the machines are absolutely incredible. They, they sort out the plastic and wood, any, any uh. Environmental stuff, the stainless that is. And at the end, they have it all, the machines wants it all out for them. But I, I suspect there's value in those that. That I'd like to take in miscellaneous revenue, so yeah. So I'll get somebody over and, and uh, take a look. They're not going anywhere uh, for a little while. You got a pretty good batch of them there, so I know they're in your way.
Well, some of those are ones that I'm gonna repair too.
Okay, okay, so.
All right. Anything else for Guy? Let's move to council member reports.
Uh, just a couple of items. Uh, one has got, uh, the hired Brody. Uh, hopefully the uh, uh, the results continue. Uh, Robert and I last, uh, a couple of weeks ago cleaned out the electronics on our electronic recycle day. And got a boatload out of the fire room downstairs. Uh, my next mission is to reorganize the file room. Uh, there's files sitting in the middle of the aisleways and stuff on them and we just need to get ryming grease in it and see what's down there. Um, and uh, lastly, as, as Nathan and Dan know, we're uh, in the middle of a budget. Uh, we've had several meetings. I think we have one, one more to go with, with Guy. We'll begin pulling the budget together to see where we are.
We don't have a schedule either.
Time schedule, yeah. Okay, all right. Um, we've done a little bit going on here. Oh, anyway, it is, just to make council aware. That um, there is um, a debate currently going on with the uh, joint administrator. President of the Plan Council regarding why it's being garage. And the definition of what's water in an LA structure. Uh, what uh, was going to occur was a pressure tank put in an LA structure. And by definition, that is water. So uh, the debate is on. I, it isn't bringing up, I've not had a final. Pressure tank is water. I've been waiting for that from the zoning administrator. Robert's not here today, so. Uh, hopefully we'll get some resolution on this. I would hate to see the homeowner. Um, go do something that has to get undone or is not gonna meet his uh, ultimate plan need, so. Uh, stay tuned uh, regarding that. That's it.
I've just got two things. One, I've had um, residents complaining about the number of signs. Around the lake, um, from contractors. And I actually drove around the lake today and there's over sixty signs between. Rupper, I mean, one company has. I mean, one, yeah, one of them has over twenty-three signs. So I will send um. Since Robert's not here, I'll just send him an email. And uh, it's something we need to reinforce as time.
Pretty good about getting a pullout of intersections because they, I mean, you'll come in here on Monday morning and they got ten of them. At a corner.
Yes.
So I've been, anybody that's been actively working, I've been leaving the signs, but when they start getting.
Yeah, well, we need to, and you know, I think that's the thing, because I mean, this one contractor, they've got twenty-three signs around the lake. And according to our policies, you know, you're not supposed to even have two within an eighty-foot span. And there's some that are three houses in a row. So it does come to what, what the community looks like from an appearance. That's why we have this. So I'll just, just so everybody knows, science is something I'm gonna, um, of the follow-up of the program. The other thing, and you guys probably all saw it in your inbox. Is AIM has uh, sent out, they have updated their medical crust. Um, and they, they're reaching out to all communities and municipalities as far as putting a quote together. And what we were, what we had talked about last year, we were unable to do. So I'm gonna work with. Nathan and George to at least get our information in to see how much that would cost um, for our employees. So I will work with the two of them to have that done.
Right, I believe part of the needs there, I understood it. I, I haven't gotten deep into it, but uh. An overview is that we need employee participation of, of some of their personal factors so that. A can see just who we are in a uh, insurance stand from.
Yeah, and now, um, cause they do, they do offer the full, full, you know, it's. They're fully insured for anybody that has two employees or more. So that number has changed too, and we do meet that criteria. So I think we should get a quote. Um, that's because that is something that helps with retention, um, with employees too. It's something we've talked about for years, so. I'll work with Nathan to get this stuff filled out and work from an H R perspective. So that might, you know, we'll keep you guys posted in hopes to get a quote in a timely fashion. So that's all I have.
Moving on to the general discussion. I would like to discuss the September meetings. Um, reasoning why is.
We need open it for public discussion too.
No, we end up general discussion between council. So anyways, general discussion amongst council members. In order to keep the meetings at a reasonable time, knowing that we've got two orpences that'll need to be read.
In order to keep the meetings at a reasonable time, knowing that we've got two ordinances that'll need to be read. We've got the budget coming up. Would it be wise for us to consider doing two meetings in September to keep it to a manageable time? You know, we've got to read through the ordinances, we know the budget's gonna take a healthy chunk of at least one meeting. So looking, looking at you guys, are you looking for September as?
October was on my mind.
Okay, October was on your mind?
Right now, we can uh we can certainly. Have something to review as a. Predecessor of the final numbers to look at and go through the assumptions, we can go through. Some of the underpinnings of my producers, the results. It won't be the full.
So we want to keep it just one meeting.
Yeah, let's keep it one meeting then, if you're okay with that. You know.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just trying to prevent some of those ones that go.
And I think things are what Dan to sharing, then, you know, it it might maybe October's two meeting month, I don't know, um but what sounds like. We're good for September.
Okay.
Just keep it as is.
Sounds good to me.
I decided to add to that if uh from Nathan, from your perspective, if the agenda, something gets the agenda that you see is time consuming. Then you might want to throw the flag and say, hey.
Yeah.
We need to break this up.
Right.
But in the absence of anything unique or special.
Yeah, I was under the assumption that we were gonna be dealing with one bunch of stuff in September.
Yeah, that's good.
I'm gonna let.
Well, I think we we will be, but it's it's gonna be the three of us, and I don't think we'll be ready to.
Right, I didn't know if we need. We have to present it to the public, if we do that in October, but September, I didn't know if we were gonna have a big meeting between all of us that the public was. Invited to, we had our discussion. So, we could, we could talk about it, we can.
You know. And George, good, good. Good advice, we see it starting to get stacked up, we know, yes, we've got the ability to do two, if we need to, to keep the meetings reasonable.
But I think in the meantime, regarding budget, I think the three of us, Dan, you and I, we have some heavy looking to do soon.
Great, so anyone in council gender discussion? Okay, we'll open it up to the public, any?
First.
Oh geez.
I will second Molly's motion to open to the public. This is Brent.
All those, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Kathy Todd? Anybody else? Okay, so we will.
Thank you, I will make a motion of course to the public.
Go ahead, Dan.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
And I will second Dan's motion for the.
All of those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Motion carries. So Nathan, you need to put the vouchers. Poor Robert and Jen are not gonna like their their takeaway list.
What did you do to watch that presentation? I did, I looked at it. I really wanna find out either. Hop over railing.
Now, I should. Where's that? The Lakeview Bridge?
Over, it's uh further east of uh. Dune Dex. The towards, going towards. Yeah, it's. That's all great.
Guy goes spend that money. Oh, gosh.
So, the car. Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
He's talking, he's talking about my bridge on West Green Lake Bridge. You're talking about the seams that that takes your back out.
Uh like, no, I'm talking Lakeview, Lakeview.
We pulled, they put coal patch over it the other day.
I saw you do that. You, you need something that tie off along the first go around, didn't you?
I told all about, I called the company and said, come fix your bridge.
Want them to keep those.
Yes, the same thing I told them on West Green Lake, I said, come fix your bridge.
What'd they say?
They sent the bridge girls out.
The bridge girls?
Yeah, they come out and they, you've never seen a bright paint?
No, I, I, no, I know, they tap over by my mother.
They, they don't.
Because they're two girls and they're women that. I think they do, I think they do okay. Is that a wrap?
Uh, did you sign the voucher?
I did, it's over a naked.